I'll get started. And that looks like it's four o'clock. So there being a forum, I call the meeting to order. And selectmen Gant is recording the meeting. Our first item, as most people in town are aware, the chairman. I'm sorry. The chairman of the board of selectmen, Mark Lyons, passed away last Tuesday. So we'd like to start this meeting with a few words about Mark from any selectman who wishes to share.
I will go. And I have about the same problem as you do. This has been a sad week for the town of Topsil. Topsil paid a dear price on Tuesday when Mark passed. And I lost a good personal friend. We will all miss him a lot. There's a lot of people in town that have the same feelings I do. And many of them have already expressed their sorrow to his wife and his family. And they're making amends as well as they. She told me this afternoon that life goes on, so she will, she'll be all right.
Well, we certainly listen going forward. We do have the advantages of all the years that he did dedicate to the town and various things that he did and accomplished, whether it was on the founding board or finance committee, on school, and then here as a board of selectmen of the town, has that richness that he brought to the town for many years. And going forward, yes, it's a loss, but he did set a number of things in place for all the work that he did.
That's right. Good.
Yeah, I've been feeling that Mark has left a really big hole that cannot be filled, but that we will take advantage of the skills and capabilities of those who know and respect him. And I'm sure going forward, many who did not know him as well, in doing our best to try and be able to do as well as we were able to do under his leadership. I absolutely feel that he was one of the critical reasons in my making a final decision to run for board of selectmen. I would always have a debt to him for not only that, but all that I have, not only felt in him teaching me personally, but in leading all of us together. It's been, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, I would only add, he was a very supportive, smart, kind man, who always wanted things to get to the point. You wouldn't want to hear or use 50 words when 10 would do. He gave 200% to the town. And he always made his decisions based on what was right for the town, regardless of how people might perceive him. So he was a great person, friend, and chair.
I'd just like to add one word now that I'm at the point where I might be able to talk. I would hope that this board could carry on some of the things that he would have us do. And I'm sure we will. I'd like to see that.
All right. We'll move on now to the election of officers. So we have an open position of chairman, so I will entertain a motion for the nomination of a chairman.
And now we make Lynn Bermudez, the chairman, for chairman of the board of selectmen.
He's very kind of you, Dick. I, you know, I mean, prefer not to run at this point for the position.
I nominate John Spencer.
Do we have any discussion?
One of the things that I'm concerned about, John, is that from time to time, you've acted, certainly as a member of the board of selectmen, but in an individual sense, and we are a board. If you were chairman, would you continue to function as a board or as an individual?
I, first of all, haven't thought of operating or acting outside of being a board member, although certainly I've expressed some opinions. But I would absolutely consider it important that there be no question as to whether I was working first on a personal basis or for the board. Any of us on the board, regardless of the position within the board, owes it to the town first.
Is this a work through the board always?
Work through with and on behalf of. I mean, that comes in many different flavors, but most absolutely.
Could I offer this thought? On behalf of the board can be taken as a personal decision that this is on behalf of the board. But it's really through the board that everybody sees it as that. I think that's a particularly important thing, that it's not simply an opinion of an individual that it's for the board, but rather that it is the board's approach to that.
I would add that, if I may, I would add that in that regard, there will be many times when you will be functioning as a board member alone. And I'd like to think that when that happens, you would have discussed those potential issues with board members so that you can go into that situation feeling comfortable that you do have the support of the board.
I would accept that. And certainly, there have been folks I've reached out to not to take as action on behalf of the board, but to make inquiries and so on. If I were to represent the board as chair, then I would be particularly careful to be sure that there wasn't a perception that I must operate independently. I haven't felt that I was, but I would certainly seek to prevent a perception that might be in my mind.
Take a vote, all in favor of the nomination of John Spencer as chairman of the board?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, I will turn the thing over to you, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to make one more motion, if I may, before, well, maybe we can do it after John is officially chairman. But I would like to make a motion that we change the title of the position of the clerk to vice chairman slash clerk. I think Lynn Bermudez functions more than clerk. I don't want her to be perceived as a secretary to the board of selectmen because that's not what she is. But I think by calling her vice chairman, that satisfies me and it will make that job, put that job on a level that I think is important.
I would offer only that I would prefer to use the term vice chair as opposed to chairman. Because as we, I know, I know. We're from that age. I know it's habit. But if you think that makes sense and we might even at some time choose to refer to ourselves as a select board, but that's not your point for the moment.
So you're going to ask for nominations? The point would be to ask for a nomination for the vice chair slash clerk?
Well, I think the first thing is, there perhaps should be a motion first to retitle the position as vice chair slash clerk. And then to reaffirm the nomination or the appointment of Lynn to that.
Then I will make a motion. I will make a motion that we change the title to vice chair slash clerk.
I think we need to go back through the bylaws if we're going to make an official change. Just, just so we're not embarrassed by this. There may be some places where specifically it refers to something. I can't imagine quite what it is. It would seem if it refers to clerk, we're covered if it says both. It just might be worth it to.
Well, there's no question that there's countless references to clerk throughout our bylaws, but.
So that should cover it then?
That should cover it. And as far as, as long as I've been around here, nobody has ever talked about there being a vice chair. So I don't think you're going to find that wording anywhere, to my knowledge at least. And, and I think that if we do vice chair slash clerk, I think that covers it.
The clerk has certain legal duties by state law. And those would not change. What this seems to do is merely recognize that the role of the clerk certainly is being held by the incumbent is a bigger job, more responsibility, and worthy of being expressed in this way. It does not take away the possibility, at some point, if for good reason, a future board chose to separate those two titles. But right now, I think making each of them held by one individual is appropriate. So I guess I would, I would suggest maybe vice chair and clerk. Because that, that I think expresses a little more the possibility. There may be a time beyond our being able to predict the reasons for it when we may wish to.
Well, that would make some sense in my opinion, because you could refer to her. You could refer to that person, excuse me, you could refer to that person as the clerk.
Yes.
Or you could refer to that person as the vice chair, depending on what the issue is. But the only reason, the only, the only intention for me to do this was to raise the stature of the job from clerk, in some people's minds, secretary, to a, to a higher level. And, and as you said, there's state law that, that has certain duties that the clerk has to attend to.
So my sense is vice chair and clerk would, for the time being, so that you're comfortable in that.
Without a slant.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
We've had a, a motion that has been slightly amended to where the question before the board is and has been seconded, whether to, there's a motion to change the title of the clerk's position, currently held by Lynn Bermudez as incumbent, to vice chair and clerk. And first and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. So next steps. The, one of the things, we did have a meeting scheduled this coming Thursday, a working session, which has been canceled. And I haven't looked at when our next meeting is. Nineteenth, yeah, I guess it's a week from today. So one of the things that frankly, because this is happening fast and I, I'm not operating on any assumption about how this would go today. I would like an opportunity for the longer term to sit with our interim town administrator and develop a, an agenda schedule going forward. I would invite any board members with interest in having certain agenda items on, any items on the agenda, to send that to the town administrator, cc to myself. But I would like to ask the town administrator if it would be the repository of those. And to the extent that questions can be answered very well, I think that would be most appropriate. Not to pull myself out of it, but to try to make it something where there's not a quality. It isn't going through one individual who is only looking at it, so. In terms of next steps, what I'd like to do is ask if you have any particular thoughts on, within the next week or two, that we should do. I had one thought only, which I've been thinking about a lot. We have the other conference room down at the other end. That's an unnamed conference room. It has a number, right?
It doesn't have a number, does it?
They all have numbers.
Oh, they all have numbers.
They all have numbers.
Room number, room number.
Room number, yeah. I'm, you know, it's going to sound small potatoes, but I think it's symbolic. My question is whether we might want to consider entertaining a naming ceremony for that room as memorial or conference room or something.
Yeah, or the upstairs?
Well, the upstairs. So maybe we should think about that. And entertaining doesn't mean make decisions today, but to have a conversation. But it seems that that might be.
Well, it, it is becoming known as, and the term first floor conference room is used all the time. Isn't that what we call it?
Talking of the public hall?
No, first floor conference.
First floor conference, yes.
Down at the end of the hall. That is the first floor conference room.
And maybe.
Are you thinking like Mark Lyons?
In memory of Mark?
No, not just, I mean, I'll be honest, I really want to recognize Mark. With all due respect to Mark, we've had some incredible past select people and other town leaders. And I was wondering whether, and this is something for all of us to think about before we make a decision, but whether we might want to broaden that, or whether we feel that this particular case, at this time in our new town hall, given his role in leading the committee to, that helped make this happen, that the Mark Lyons company would be appropriate, so.
Something to think about.
Okay, I'll put it on for the next.
Can we put that on for the next one? And if you have any next steps that were on your mind?
I would think a discussion about the replacement of Mark and whether or not we hold a special election in the fall or whether we just proceed to the spring, spring election. So discussing kind of the pros and cons. Not that we need to make any decision today. We can think about it and maybe get some input from people in town, reaction to their feelings. But I have a couple of pros and cons to, to share and then maybe we just.
What I, what I would like to do is see if there are other next steps and definitely return and discuss that. Do you have any particular next steps?
I have nothing to, no, I'm prepared to talk about, especially my life.
We have our normal ongoing business, which will resume on the nineteenth.
One of the things that we have right on to us though is to try to deal with the goals. We have existing goals. We said they represent a lot of it. But I think it's worth it as a team to sit down once again and go through what goals we have and what we might want to add to them or essentially take them off because they've been achieved or they're well underway or whatever the case may be. But to again sharpen what it is that we are driving for in the coming year.
I think it would be helpful.
Because we're well into the year already.
Yeah.
This is sooner than last year, which is good. So, you know, we've got a leg up and then we've got goals to start from. And maybe reaching out to the interim town administrator and to the department heads to get some information to feed into that process. There are things probably they're closer to that we're not as thrilled with that are significant efforts, especially ahead of the budget cycle.
Yeah, and I would encourage us all to think in terms of town goals, which will include individual goals along the way. But town goals oftentimes are things that don't show up in their entirety on anyone's performance review, but are designed to provide a direction and a focus that anyone in town can use to see where we believe we should be headed and to follow along in how well we're doing. Is that a conversation we could put on the agenda for the nineteenth?
Yes, it is. My thought was, I had some discussion about this. Excuse me, my thought is that we could revisit it, or if you wanted to set up a working session for that, that you could revisit it, seek an opportunity for, if you wish, for a department head or, you know, department head input, even input from the community. And then just sort of like you're doing with the town administrator search. Put it out there, here are draft goals. We're going to take these up to this meeting in September and finalize them. If you have any input, contact the select board members of the selectmen's office. And then wrap them up because I feel that, you know, the goals should inform the budget process. And the budget process will be starting probably in October. And I'm getting the capital forms together. I'm going to talk to Catherine about that because that process is starting. And to the degree that the board identifies goals and department heads can see whether they have capital projects or requests that coincide or support those goals.
What I think this suggests, and open to your reaction to this, that the next board of selectmen meeting on the nineteenth, that we announce that we will be, again, looking at town goals and reviewing those in the interim and for period after that. If you would use that opportunity, please to inquire with the department heads and those who are in.
Would you like me to do that, like starting tomorrow?
Starting tomorrow is a great idea. I'm not saying that it has to wait. It doesn't have to be finished by the nineteenth. But I also think on the nineteenth, we could announce to the community that if there are particular town goals that people are concerned about, if they would write a, a letter or email to the board as a whole. We will not debate it online, but we will acknowledge any inputs and incorporate them into our conversation. So it allows the community in general to weigh in on something they may feel important in someone.
All right, one of those may fit into one of your goals.
Well, it may very well fit. And frankly, I, I think we're going to do well to take our existing set of town goals and use that as a jumping off point for the new ones. Some things have been accomplished, some have not, some are in progress, so. I'm looking ahead, and we have a meeting on the nineteenth. I'm wondering whether we should schedule a working session for the week before Labor Day. Is that possible?
That's the twenty sixth.
It could be, well, twenty sixth is Monday. That's not as, I would say.
Let's say the last.
Last, it could be, in my view, it would be August, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, August twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. Friday, people are gone. And I think for those that are able to head down to the Cape on a Thursday, maybe Tuesday or Wednesday would be better.
Tuesday, I don't work Wednesdays, so Tuesday would be.
Is Tuesday, the twenty seventh, possible?
Well, I'm, I'm working, I'm working, I'm working that day. So I can't, I can't be there unless I can get a substitute. But I could do, I could do Thursday.
Oh, you don't work, you're working Thursday?
I work Thursdays, but I thought I could go into the Cape.
Well, maybe we could, maybe we could start at two or something.
Who's going to the Cape? Are you going to the Cape? No.
No, actually, I, you know, I'm flying to Washington on that Friday, so I'm actually here that Thursday.
It's a little problem.
How about Thursday, the twenty ninth?
So what time works?
It's three.
We've been doing three, is that good for you?
Yeah, we've been doing three.
Okay, so, so then eight, twenty nine, we'll have a working session. And one of the goals, typically a tradition of our working sessions are to tackle one, sometimes two, key issues and questions. So we'll make town goals the lead and possibly only.
Well, the website is something that I'm still, I could do the website.
I don't know. To talk to the board on the nineteenth?
Well, we were going to talk to them on the nineteenth, but I'd like to put that off to the twenty ninth. The website, we have.
We were going to meet before that?
Yeah.
And then we're not going to, yeah, so.
What we'd like to do is also just put the front page of the website up there to let you know what our progress is.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, we're not really asking for a yes or no, but so you can look at it and say, do you like it?
Yeah, that's fine. I think we can do that. The other thing, and I'm not trying, in fact, I'm trying not to load up that working session. I have every expectation that we will have at least a preliminary proposal for work on internet security. And we will want to be able to take some action, whether it is, yes, these are people, let's go, or yes, this is really worth doing, let's put it out to public bid. We don't know numbers, we don't know anything yet now. But that seems to be an important one to get going. And our next scheduled meeting is September ninth, so it's a long way away. But maybe we put that on that September ninth.
That's fine. I did have a conversation with John that we can apply for a moniker, my grant for that of up to $10,000.
For P I T security?
I T security audit, which the good news is that preliminary casual conversations indicate that that's probably an excessive what it might, that it might come in on, but we just don't know at this point.
We're just trying to get a quote.
If we get it for free, we go. So we need, we need a number that we can realistically use, whether we choose to go another event or not.
How long does that usually take to come in, a response?
Oh, boy, I don't know, but they're, they just sent out their, I would assume within like six or eight weeks.
So we had actually planned to talk about this on the nineteenth, Monday, a week from today. So are we have that still on the agenda? There'd be more information about the security analysis?
That, I don't, I have not, Debbie's been asked, so I don't, I'm going to stick with Debbie and go over a mock agenda with, and send it out to John. What you did ask at the last meeting is could we get a grant for that?
Yes.
And I'm answering yes. And, but what we need is a solid quote.
Yes, it'd be a scope. I've asked the Quantilevics Incorporated to look at our website. Give them some information on where we think, how far the internet usage reaches for our group. They've signed, by the way, a non-disclosure agreement so that they are bound not to share any of our information. We're bound not to share any information about their manner of way of working too. But on that basis, we sent the technology report so they could kind of see what we have for quantity and distribution of I T resources. And asked them specifically to propose scope as they thought necessary. And as we've already found out, one of the things they do in putting this together is they actually go in and they poke a little bit and see where there might be screen doors or doorways deserve to be in place. And they would add that to the scope in that case. So they'll do a small assessment in the process of putting this together. So if we get that in time, then we can talk about it.
That, yeah, but I think that would be a decision that you can make at the first board meeting in September. Does that seem acceptable?
If we get a grant, you could use, and it wasn't, it didn't fulfill all the dollars. No, it was $4,000, they would give us a grant. We can apply it partially towards the cost of doing the work. You don't have to, the grant doesn't have to pay for the whole thing. We'd like it to, but we can use the grant in partial payment.
They say if we apply for $10,000, they give us five, we can use that.
Let's, let's see what we have to propose and what we choose to ask for. So I'm finding out. Anything else in terms of, that we want to talk about here? We've taken town goals. All we have currently as discussion of next steps is regarding a question of filling the vacancy on the board.
I've got a couple of things I'd like to just, as a matter of information. First of all, did you all see that we got the complete street grant?
Yes.
To the thing of $300,000 or something like that?
$382,000.
We've, we've applied for that twice. Forever. And we finally got it. So now it becomes a process of.
I've asked Dave Vaughn to come meet with me about that.
He would be the get started. The other thing I'd like to say is, over the last week or 10 days, I've had several meetings with Parks and Cemeteries over the issue of the Emerson Field lease that is still hanging. I had suggested that we have a joint meeting between them and ourselves to discuss that subject and where we go from here. And they're not prepared to do it in September primarily because, in August, primarily because they are traveling hither and yon and would be difficult to call together a meeting. There isn't any time constraints on when that's going to be done, in my opinion. So I will continue to work to schedule, with you guys' approval, to schedule a joint meeting to talk about where we go with that lease. to talk about where we go with that lease, if we go anywhere.
Okay, does that make sense?
But perhaps a good summary is that, at this point, the town is not using that field because we do not have an agreement, which is what you said earlier, we can go.
That's right.
And that's the way it has to stay, because we don't have a right to it in the first place.
That's right.
We're not maintaining it because we don't have a right to be on it, until something does or doesn't happen.
Exactly right, yeah. And it'll stay that way until we have a signed lease.
Excellent.
Or it'll stay that way, period.
It just depends upon if we don't use it or not, just stay that way. I think the most important thing is, if we're not maintaining an incurring cost for return, getting no direct benefit, and we're not in a lease agreement that might mean that we'd have more liability, I think those are the two positives of the current situation, and we'll see how it resolves, so. I think that covers the things we've talked about, except replacing our colleague and filling the empty seat on the board, and open a discussion on how to proceed.
If I could suggest, Mr. Chair, we have our clerk here who could explain to us what the process would be if we chose to go for the fall election, and then we could talk from there about the pros and cons.
Yeah, we have two options, one is, we don't legally have to fill it, but we could, and the question then becomes which is more beneficial for our reasons, and Beth, as our town clerk, would you care to share your thoughts on what you've learned?
Well, I provided a one-pager for you all, which I hope you all had a chance to look at.
Beth, would you mind coming up here, just so that we could.
On camera, so that the camera can see you.
So, as you noted, it's, you may fill the position if you like by law, or if there is petition by residents, then you have to have, fill the position and have a special election.
And there was two hundred.
Two hundred, or twenty percent, whichever is less. Do we know which is less?
Two hundred. Two hundred, I believe.
Two hundred. So, so that's where that stands. I put together some preliminary numbers of how much the election would cost, it's a little bit more than four thousand dollars, I have some inquiries out to the vendors, most of the costs are basically fixed, the only things that may be flexible would be the ballots, the cost of the ballots, because it would be a smaller ballot, because it would just be for one office, we could use a smaller ballot, and then that would also translate to the programming cost for the flashcards that go in the tabulators, we always have two tabulators ready to go, we have one that we use at the election, then we have a backup, and then there's also programming for the auto mark machine, which is the machine that's used, has to be set up by law for anyone that requires assistance hearing or site assistance. So those costs may be slightly less. I've talked to a clerk who has handled some special elections, and she says, don't think that because it's the one office on a ballot, that those costs are going to go down significantly, but slightly. So, that's where the numbers basically stand. I've checked in with the church to make sure that there is nothing huge on their schedule, I didn't know if they would have confirmations this fall, I asked mostly about the end of October going into the beginning of November, and they said that, no, there's nothing going on, but they appreciated the heads up, and so that's, that's where that stands.
Thank you for covering all the bases.
And you have here a timeframe of sixty-four days.
Right, that's, yes.
From the time that we choose to do an election and state the date of the election?
Correct, when you notify me.
Date.
So, just looking at our fiscal year, because that's where the budgets go and things like that, but it's not the budget so much, it's just what's happening in the twelve months between town election and town election, and that is that we have a primary coming up on March first.
Correct.
That's the presidential primary.
Right.
And the next one after that.
Is our May election.
The May election.
Right.
So, sometimes it's nice to, it's nice to be able to snap into one of those, because they already exist, means some of the costs, those fixed costs are covered.
Right.
And also, the people are very aware of what's going on, because it's also, say, election order, this, or this, or this. So, just for our own reference, those are the two things that are happening within this fiscal year.
Correct. I did check with elections about the possibility of maybe doing the special election with the March primary, and they said, yes, it can be done, it's unwieldy to deal with, because it's going to be a primary already, and there's going to be at least three ballots that we will have to be handing out, and then.
Because it's different, because it's a primary.
Different parties, right. So this would be a fourth ballot, and because it's a local that we'd be running with this, a state or federal election, we would have to have separate check-in, check-out, so we wouldn't really save any money on, I'd have to have double the staff, check-in, check-out staff, all day long, if we chose to do it in March.
And that would leave two months between the election and.
Right.
One would be the official next election.
Correct. The other thing they pointed out was that there is probably, although they haven't told us yet, another unfunded mandate from the state, we're probably going to have early voting for the primary, and if early voting is offered for the primaries, it's rumored to be probably five days of early voting, we would have to also offer it for the local election, and we don't usually offer early voting for that. So, that's just another thing to throw in the way.
Well, my initial reaction is that might be a good thing to do, is to hook it up to the primary, but the more I hear about the board, it makes me think that maybe we don't want to go there.
If the primary was November first, I would consider it.
You only need two months.
As like, it's all over by then.
Beth, you had down here November fifth was a date that the state elections office suggested as a possible date, because it's already an election day for cities, if we decided to do a fall election, is there any benefit to our?